Mr. Mayor, you are live in three, two, one.
Greetings, everybody. We're going to start our June 1st remote council meeting. The way it works, for those of you who are tuning in for the first time, is you're going to see me most of the meeting. I will answer a couple of questions for the public question period. I'll answer a couple of questions that were emailed in earlier today. And if you are able to ask a question during the question period, I'll address those as well. At the moment, my screen isn't showing any other questions being put in right now. Okay, you'll have to bear with me. I'm using three different computers. It's the only way to see everything I have to see. So you'll see me looking away like now. And the first item is the public question period. And while some of you have another question and can figure out how to send it to me using this thing, great, I'll answer those. But I'll start with the two that were sent in earlier. The first question comes from Andrea Elbaz, and Andrea has asked, "Why is it that I have to spend $250 every spring to repair my lawn after the city of Hampstead blows dirty snow and damages my grass? I understand that other municipalities offer to make those repairs. Is there any compensation for your damage done?" Okay, first of all, I'm not aware of any municipalities that on a regular basis repair damaged grass that is simply the result of snow being put on the lawns. We don't. What we do, everything is a case by case basis. If the damage is excessive, if it's more than what you would get just by having snow dumped on the lawn, then we will consider. You can make a claim to our town clerk, Pierre Tap. You have to make the claim within 15 days of first seeing the damage. So the damage might be caused during the winter. Once the melt, if you see there's damage, you have 15 days to notify the town clerk in writing of the damage and request that we do whatever. And we will consider that. But again, it must be excessive. Normal damage, brown lawn, gravel from the street, those types of things won't be considered. And I'm very certain that every other town operates, well, I don't know if they do any repairs, but they certainly don't do repairs for normal damage just from the fact that they snow there. There is a dispensation from the provincial government. Municipalities are allowed to put snow on the grass, and obviously, it's going to cause some damage. The other issue that has come up in the past, one resident spoke very forcefully that we should truck away all the snow, and we shouldn't put snow on grass. At that time, we did a little research. To do that, it would raise everybody's taxes by about 25% at that time. It's probably even more. Plus, we'd have to find a dump that would take the snow, which in the area, there is absolutely none. So that's not going to happen either. So that's the story there. I'll move on. And the other thing I want to mention is, nobody has to wait for a council meeting to ask the question. Anyone can email me at any time, and you'll get a fast and detailed response. Now, the second question, let me find it. Second question is from, here it is, Morton Grossdorn. And he says, "Does the town have an existing bylaw that deals with residents leaving scrap, junk, waste, and other items of garbage on their properties in full view from the street or sidewalk? If so, what is the bylaw number and the penalties for an offense, and then subsequent offenses?" Okay.
Get me my discotti after it's over, please. I never went out of the house today.
Patient mutes their systems.
Okay, I don't know what I'm hearing in the background, but...
Everybody needs to mute their systems, guys. Everybody else milt their system.
Everybody must what?
Mute.
Oh, mute. Good. Okay, everybody, I'm back. I'm still here. The short answer is yes, we have a nuisance bylaw, and it does cover the situation that Mr. Grossdorn has mentioned. However, for more details, I was told that he asked this question earlier today of our head of urban planning and our town clerk, and he may have already gotten the full answer. If not, he will get the full answer, meaning the bylaw number, the section that refers to this, and so on. So that will be coming his way tomorrow if it hasn't already reached him. And that takes care of the questions I got in advance. I'm just going to see here if there may be other questions. Just one minute.
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, I think there's a question here. It's from an anonymous person. It says, "Bylaws are changing monthly. What formal policies and procedures does the town..." Sorry, I just have to figure out how to get the rest of that question.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read it to you?
Sure.
It says, "Bylaws are changing monthly. What formal policies and procedures does the town have in place to ensure all town employees within their respective departments are aware of these changes?"
Okay, so the rest, I don't think the audience could hear that. So the rest of the question is, what policies and procedures? Here it is. "Does the town have in place to ensure all town employees within their respective departments are aware of these changes?" I believe that our town clerk, after every meeting, makes sure that all department heads are aware of any changes that occurred at our monthly meetings, or, as the case may be, special council meetings in between. So yes, they're automatically notified of changes that happen after every meeting. And while this says, "Bylaws are changed monthly," there are some changes, usually very minor. But whatever changes there are, our department heads are advised. Okay, that seems to be the end of all the questions. So we will now move to the regular meeting. Before we adopt the agenda, I think councillor Goldwax wants to add an item to the agenda. Councillor Goldwax?
Yes, if you give me one second, I'm just going to pull it up. So I'm going to be adding item 10.2. 10.2 is resolution granting the contract for disposition of street broom waste and materials coming from excavations.
Okay. Would someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, that was councillor Leonel Fassi is seconding it. Anyone opposed? I hear nothing, therefore, nobody's opposed. Would someone like to move adoption of the agenda as amended?
Goldwax.
Councillor Goldwax, seconded by?
Schaefer.
Councillor Schaefer. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, so the agenda is modified, has been adopted, and we will move on to the departmental monthly reports. And I believe you'll get a chance to see each councillor as they give you their monthly reports. We'll start with councillor Wigginsburg, who will talk about community services.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody still finds themselves well and healthy. And please, going forward, as things start opening up, please don't forget to be very careful and still watch your distancing, because as people start going out, there'll be more and more danger. And I want everybody in Hampstead to stay well. So basically, tennis reservations started Tuesday, May 19. I know there have been some glitches in the tennis, trying to figure it out. I think we're coming out on the other positive end of it, and things seem to be working better. So just ask everybody to be patient, because we're trying to figure it out, but things seem to be working better. The CSR staff now are working from the building, but the building is still closed to the public. We have CSR does have yoga and boot camp. It's running online through classes via Zoom, and it's free. Having said that, all other activities are on hold or canceled. And all CSR staff have still been making their weekly calls or their daily callers to the people that have requested it. Day camp, even though the Quebec government has offered, has said that day camps can open, after looking at all the rules, the decision has been made that it just doesn't make sense. It's way too complicated, so we will not be having day camp. Pool, the Quebec government is going to be, hopefully, opening the pools. We're looking at it, trying to figure out the best and safest way to do this, and hopefully we'll have that coming relatively soon. I think ultimately, basically, all sports programs, all summer and spring activities for the time being are either canceled or on hold until more things show off better. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, councillor. And agree on finance.
Okay, so the big thing as far as finance is concerned is the 2019 audits and financials were completed. Most of it, work was done remotely. We still have not had a chance to meet with the auditors. That will happen the week of June 22. After we've met with the auditors, then the financials will be tabled, at which point they will be public. And sometime after that, we will have an open question and answer period to go over the financials with the residents, as we do every year, for full transparency, if anybody has any questions, and they will be presented. As everybody knows, hopefully, the second installment of the taxes are due June 12. That's a month later than they were originally. So just letting me know, June 12 is the date. The park funds now were at 1.02 million with another 560,000 in the pipeline, so that's a very healthy amount. As far as COVID is concerned, we've got a COVID emergency measures fund. We're somewhere up around 300,000 at this point, all in. That's direct expenses. There are other things that aren't in that, which are COVID-related, such as not having expenses for the pool if we don't open the pool. And I think I mentioned last month that the big number that we're going to be looking at is a drop in the 1.3 million that we have as a transfer taxes. We don't know how that's going to work out. But looking at the numbers so far, things have been actually pretty good. In May alone, we still had $800,000 invested, up to nearly $1 million invested by residents in new construction and renovations on their homes. So things are moving on that side. And then, as could be expected, our overtime is practically nil in May compared to about 13,000 last year for the same period. So I think I mentioned this last month, but it bears repeating, we are in very good financial shape. We can weather this storm from a financial point of view. We've got the reserves. And the key thing is this, everybody be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Goldwax on Public Works.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. And thank you for joining us for our special meeting, unique meeting, being from a distance. First of all, for Public Works, one of my portfolios, we are investigating and looking into rescheduling the staff. We had to do very important measures since the beginning of this in March, and realigning our staff and our teams in order to ensure social distancing even while they work and to ensure their safety. As of May 25, all of our blue collar workers have returned to a full schedule, albeit it's now spread over seven days due to the space constraints we have at Public Works buildings. We've even gone as far now, since the CSR is not being used as much, we are also using some of those spaces as well, so that we can space out the employees as much as we can, because social distancing is something that's very key. An infrastructure report was received by Public Works. We're in the midst of assessing it, and they will be issuing guidance to us on the critical infrastructure repairs that's going to be required over the next several months. And as well, the planned intervention from Aquadata was submitted, and we are also looking at this for analysis. As we've taken extra measures for social distancing in Public Works, we've had to actually acquire some vehicles so that people can social distance while going and around work. So we purchased three used vehicles so that they can get the Public Works employees around while social distancing. It's actually a big orchestra to orchestrate all this, because employees have to work close together, and we have to ensure their safety. We've also sent out a tender for paving certain streets to be redone over the course of the summer. And that's pretty much my report for Public Works. I will say that, big kudos to Public Works for doing the work that they've done in the difficult period of the last almost 12 weeks of this pandemic. And concerning seniors, I would like to reassure the families of the residents who have their parents or loved ones at the Waldorf. After working very hard for the past 12 weeks, we are completely green or cold, whatever you want to call that zone. We have no cases in the Waldorf. Everyone is safe. So family members or residents who have their families or loved ones at the Waldorf, everyone is safe, and everyone is in a safe environment. As councillor Wigginsburg talked about very quickly, we are not over. Although regulations are becoming more lax, I am urging everybody to respect the rules on social distancing, whether it's your children or grandchildren, or even yourselves when it comes to gathering and the families. Wash hands, and if you cannot respect the social distancing for whatever reason, wear a mask. Wear a mask when you're out and you cannot social distance. It is so important. We are far from over with 25,000 cases, of the 50,000 in Quebec, 25 in Montreal. We are far from safe and far from in a time where we can just say that everything is over, and it's not. And if we want to avoid loved ones, whether they're elderly or not, to get sick, please respect the social distancing, stay safe, wash hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Budning.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, congratulations to councillor Goldwax. It is a monumental task to have no cases at the Waldorf, and fingers crossed that remains for the foreseeable future. So kudos to you and your team on that. With regards to aquatics, I'll keep my report quite short, but with regards to the pool, we know that the provincial government gave the green light for municipal pools to open earlier this week. The town is currently in plans to see whether that's a viable option to open in a safe and methodical manner, to make sure that our residents can socially distance, I should say physically distance, and ensure that the lifeguards have the ability to do their job properly. So we will follow up and report to the public on whether that service will be opening. With regards to urban planning, there were 38 permits purchased in 2020 for this past month of May, which is just about nine permits less than last year. So all things considering, people are still doing work on their homes, taking the opportunity, potentially with the nice weather coming about, to get some long planned repairs done. 92 inspections were done year to date, whereas about 111 were done for the month last year. So we are working our way up. That being said, sorry, that was for year to date. The number of inspections this month were 19, whereas last year we were at 164. So obviously, with our urban planning staff coming back into the office and starting to get back into the field, things will ramp up slowly. But we do thank our residents for understanding the delays associated with this and complying with their permits and doing so in a safe manner. Very quickly with IT, once again, thank you to Terry and the team to ensure that we're able to have live broadcast council meetings. The work is being done on my Hampstead. We now have about 1,480 accounts, so residents can go through those accounts to purchase garbage bags, parking permits, construction permits, as well as tax certificates and so forth. As well, Terry's been working very hard on ensuring that residents can pay for tennis courts, and has been working in collaboration with the communications department for an eventual revamp of the town's website, which we look forward to discussing in the future. And on a communication standpoint, the e-newsletter is currently being revamped. That residents receive four times a week, four times a month, once every Sunday. They're working on the website revamp and a few other projects that are leading into the summer months. So thank you to everybody. Please remain safe. And we encourage everybody, once again, as I mentioned almost every meeting, if you have a private pool in your backyard, to ensure that your fences are locked and that it's a secure and safe environment for you and your family and for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Budning, councillor Schaefer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, all our residents of Hampstead. I hope you're all keeping safe and honoring social distancing and all the other important rules and regulations imposed by our government. I handle two portfolios, the first of which would be legal and the other would be public security. I want to thank our town clerk, Major Pierre Tap, for his report on legal, and it will read as follows. During this period, we had one assembly of the municipal council, the RCM, being on May 11. This council meeting was held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office, except for a few days, which took place at Town Hall. The clerk also participated in several simulations in order to make our web communication system efficient. The town clerk was always available to respond to requests from the various services of the municipality, whether by email, web conference call, or direct calls. More particularly, he has been in daily contact with the head of our urban planning section to resolve the various situations requiring our expertise on a day-to-day basis. He worked in collaboration on development of the agenda for the May council meeting and its follow-up. He followed the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We discuss with different clerks from other towns regarding this delicate situation. We are in contact with the clerks of other cities, and we share important logistics information. As soon as the situation allows, the document of servitude with the city of Montreal will be signed in front of a notary in order to complete this important phase of our possible sales process. The court being now in slow motion, and I would reiterate that it's certainly in slow motion, and practically only, I should say, urgent matters are heard. And if you want to have a normal presentation of a motion, the delays are very, very far away, sometimes as much as the month of September. The majority of our litigation files have therefore not changed in recent times. We are in constant contact with our lawyers on these different cases. And Mr. Mayor, that's my report for legal. My other portfolio is public security. And I want to thank our chief operations officer, Chief Mike Fitzgerald, for his report. And basically speaking, during this past month of May, there was calls, 176 calls to public security. Communications with our citizens is ongoing as usual. And now we'll be starting foot patrols, which is a seasonal matter as well. A department is functioning well in this COVID-19 situation. There have been many calls for intervention considering social distancing. For the most part, relations between public security and the residents have been favorable, and understanding with departure of our auxiliary officer and the replacement of another, the training is going well. I think it's very important, I think, that we should point out, that I think our public security is doing a fantastic job in ensuring that our residents are kept safe and ensuring that our residents adhere to social distancing. And speaking personally, I have witnessed, when I especially walk a lot on Saturdays, on the various streets, I've noticed that our public security, every time they see any type of gathering, they immediately approach and politely request that our citizens observe social distancing, and they should be complimented for that. Operationally, Chief Operations Officer Fitzgerald states as follows, "Now with the warmer weather upon us, there's a new change for the department. Some residents have not returned to work in the amount of young people out of school. This is dealing with a lot more people outside than normal. Preparation for the pool inspections are ready for implementation. Cherry Hool has been a great help with starting up a new program, which we are now familiar with, and should make the project even more efficient." Highlights of the month, Officer Johnson was very helpful in assisting an elderly resident get up while not touching her and respecting social distancing. This is the same officer that I pointed out to our residents, how he actually operated himself as a detective and found the individual who was stealing packages from the doorsteps of some of our residents. Officer Johnson, along with our new officer, Rosera, responded to a med call for a youth who had fallen from his bike. The resident was treated for cuts and scrapes by Urgent Santé, and the youth, however, refused transport to hospital. Undercover operations conducted by Officer Hardy led to the issuing of tickets for drugs in Hampstead Park, and as usual, the SPVM assisted on the call. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll just mention one thing. Councillor Budning, councillor Wigginsburg both mentioned the pool. The Quebec government has said that public pools can open. They just released today a very long set of rules for that. The council and caucus, which we'll be going back to after the public meeting, will be discussing these rules and trying to move a little further towards some type of decision. So we'll see what happens with all that. Of course, we'll announce whatever we decide to do. But the decision may not be made tonight. It may take a little time. We have to collect additional information. Okay, moving on, we're at 5.0, adoption of the minutes on motion of councillor Goldwax, seconded by councillor...
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor Wigginsburg. It is resolved, the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 11, 2020 are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, so we move on. As I'm doing this meeting, some of the councillors are sending messages, which I can't respond to. Okay. We are at... 7.1, adoption of bylaw number 741-8, modifying bylaw number 741-1, respecting the delegation of powers. On motion of councillor...
Edery.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 741-8, modifying bylaw number 741-1, respecting the delegation of powers to officers and employees to authorize the spending of money and to make contracts in the name of the municipality. To make contracts in the name of the municipality, period. Anyone opposed? No, nobody's opposed. And for those of you listening, watching, these are relatively minor changes for just two of our management personnel. Okay, moving on. 8.1, I'll just announce that each member of council having received copies, the town clerk deposits the minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on May 12, 2020. The council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town The council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk. And that brings us to... Eight point two. This is authorization for a minor exemption for eleven Heath Road. Obviously, people can't take part during the meeting. But I will ask our town clerk, Herr Tap, were there any representations with respect to this?
Just a second, Mr. Mayor. I have a problem with my... Nope.
No. Okay, so the answer is no, there were no interested...
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
There was, there was a neighbor, actually, who wrote a letter in support of the project. So the person who was most affected was the immediate neighbor, and that immediate neighbor wrote a letter in support of the project.
Okay, so I was just informed by councillor Edery that the immediate neighbor wrote a letter in support of the minor exemption. There were nobody notifying us that they had a problem with it. So, on motion of councillor...
Wigginsburg.
Councillor Goldwax, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the minor exemption to the zoning bylaw number one thousand and one dash two for detached single-family dwelling located eleven Heath Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand and one dash two and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, moving on. We get to eight point three, which is still eleven Heath Road. This time, it's dealing with the actual project, which is an addition to the detached single-family dwelling. On motion of councillor...
Wigginsburg. Budning.
Budning and Schaefer.
Okay, motion of councillor Budning, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the addition to a detached single-family dwelling located eleven Heath Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project does not meet the prescribed standards of zoning bylaw number one thousand and one dash two and does meet the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so that's adopted, which brings us to... Eight point four, concerning one sixty-six Wexford Crescent. This is modifications of the facade. On motion of councillor...
Goldwax.
Budning.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor Budning. It is resolved that the modification of a facade for detached single-family dwelling located at one sixty-six Wexford and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The project does not meet the prescribed standards of zoning bylaw number one thousand and one dash two and does meet the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? Nope. So that will be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Which brings us to... Okay, eight point five, concerning twenty-seven Thurlow Road. A rear addition for a semi-detached, single-family dwelling. Okay, on motion of councillor...
Wigginsburg.
And Budning.
Also councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor Budning. Okay, it is resolved that a rear addition to a semi-detached, single-family dwelling located at twenty-seven Thurlow Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand and one dash two and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? Nope, and that's adopted. And that brings us to... Okay, brings us to nine point one. Approval of dispersments for the month of May twenty twenty. On motion of councillor...
Edery.
Edery, seconded by councillor Goldwax. Is resolved that the dispersments for the period of April sixteenth, twenty twenty to May fifteenth, twenty twenty, in the total amount of one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. All right. Nine point two. A resolution counseling the outstanding balances for three bylaw loans. On motion of councillor...
Edery.
Edery, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the town of Hampstead amend the bylaws listed in the appendix as follows. One, by replacing the amount of the expenditure or that of the loan by the new amount shown in the appendix in the column identified as new expense amount or as new loan amount. Two, by adding a section stipulating that for the purposes of paying part of the expenditure, the municipality allocates the amount shown in the column general funds in the appendix from its general administration fund. Three, amending the section relating to the appropriation of a grant to include therein the amount shown in the column subsidy in the appendix. The enclosed agreements are deemed to form an integral part of the corresponding bylaws identified in the appendix. That, the town of Hampstead informed the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Regions that the borrowing power of the bylaws listed in the appendix will not be applied in full because of the amendments made to said bylaws through this resolution and, as the case may be, of amounts that were either paid by developers or received from taxpayers having paid their share of the capital in a single installment. The amounts corresponding to these appropriations appear in appendix, in the appendix, under the columns motors and cash payment. That, the town of Hampstead asked the ministry to remove from its records all residual balances listed in the appendix. That certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Regions and Land Occupancy. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody.
Just to clarify, it's not new borrowing, it's just housekeeping. It's loans that we had on the books that we didn't actually use the entire amount of the loan.
Okay, I don't know if you could hear councillor Edery, but he's clarifying that these are simply amounts that we didn't need, so we're doing some bookkeeping to remove them from our books. Okay, ten point one is granting of a contract removal stumps and restarting. On motion of councillor... Councillor...
Goldwax.
Wigginsburg.
Goldwax. Goldwax.
Wigginsburg.
Okay, I heard councillor Goldwax is moving this, seconded by...
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg.
Councillor Wigginsburg. It is resolved that the following notation for the following contract being is hereby approved. The whole is more amply delineated hereunder. It goes to nine oh four three dash two oh eight nine Quebec Inc., Group DRM. And it's for, well, it's for the removal stumps and restarting. Three thousand seven hundred with taxes, it comes to thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Anyone opposed? No. Okay. And now we have the new item that was added by councillor Goldwax earlier, which is ten point two. And... This is granting of a contract for disposition of street boom waste and material from excavations. On motion of councillor...
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the contract for the disposition of street boom waste and materials from excavation for the period from August fifteenth, twenty twenty to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-one is hereby approved. The whole is more amply delineated hereunder.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, it's a two-year contract.
Oh, okay. It's not written here properly. I'll repeat that.
No, it's a correct typo. It's twenty-twenty-two. It's a two-year contract.
Okay, thank you. So the period from August fifteenth, twenty twenty to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-two being is hereby approved. The whole is more amply delineated hereunder. According to the previous year's quantities, estimated amount of expenditure for the two-year contract is one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars plus applicable taxes. And the details are earth grade A, twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents per metric ton. Earth grade AB, twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents per metric ton. Street boom waste, three dollars and twenty-four cents per metric ton. GST, QST and special taxes on aggregates are applicable on the above mentioned prices. Anyone opposed?
No. Just Pierre, as a typo, the French version has the right year. Mais pour le parti anglais en haut, c'est maquillé vingt vingt, au lieu de vingt vingt deux.
Okay, councillor Goldwax points out the French version of this resolution is correct. On the date, we will fix the English version to read the way I read it, the proper dates. Okay, moving on. We get to... Eleven point one. Approval of the hiring list of white-collar student employees for the community services recreation department, if needed. It is proposed by councillor...
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor...
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the town council approves the hiring of white-collar student employees as detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four two nine and the town of Hampstead. And I'll just make it very clear that this hiring is... We're approving this hiring if we need these student employees. In the case of the day camp employees, we will not need them because we won't...
Bill, this is only one guy for the tennis, so he's gonna be needed.
Well, the day camp employees won't be needed. The tennis employees are needed. And this one is only one person?
It's just one guy.
It's one person.
Ah, sorry. Okay, there's only one person on this one who we do need, so fine. So anyone opposed? No. So that's adopted. Now eleven point two. Authorization for the approval to purchase and implement the electronic time sheet system. It is proposed by councillor...
Goldwax.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. And resolved that the HR councillor and/or the IT division chief be authorized to sign the contract with the successful bidder, which is Kronos Inc., for the software training and support needed to implement and deploy the electronic time sheet module for use under the auspices of the human resources department at a cost of thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the first year and then eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars annually for five years. Anyone opposed?
No, just a comment. They can hear me, but I will tell you, it's a phenomenal program. I use one hundred and fifty employees, and it's a really great program, and it's really easy to use.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And that seems to bring us to the end. But... I just have to ask our town clerk, what happened to that resolution with all those other employees?
I don't know. Just a second.
Okay, I will ask everyone watching to bear with me for a minute, and I will try to find the resolution that I think should be here. My...
Bill, Bill?
Yes?
If there is another resolution with regards to being able to hire more students, and we can't find it, we could just give a blanket authorization to Richard for this month to hire more students as needed?
Oh, we could, but give me one second here.
I can't even... That would be very general, Jack, because we're not indicating for what department or anything, if you generalize it that way.
For CSR.
Okay, don't worry, I'm gonna get it. Just give me a minute. For those of you watching, it's coming, it's coming. Oh, well, while my iPad is moving much too slowly...
Just give a blanket authorization to Richard to hire whoever is necessary for the next month for CSR.
I don't know if that's ideal.
Well...
Does Pierre Tap have the resolution?
No. But I believe that according to the collective agreement that we have, we can hire people for a certain period, and we can justify after. So if Richard or anybody hired a student for, I believe it's ninety days, I'm not sure, because I don't have the collective agreement, but we can hire people and come back after to the town council to formalize it.
To approve it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to have it in a minute, the real resolution. The iPad is loading it. It's coming.
Okay. If so, we're gonna have to... Add it, and simply that we vote to add it, the new resolution, we'll have the resolution and we vote on the resolution. So that's gonna be two vote.
Hmm.
Very good.
Democracy is so exciting.
I got it, I got it. Okay, I'm not sure what number this should be, doesn't matter. It's a resolution for the approval of the hiring list of white-collar student employees for the community services and recreation department. It is proposed by councillor...
Mr. Mayor, just to add, if needed.
I'm going to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Now we need to have someone to propose to add this.
I think councillor Wigginsburg was ready to propose it.
Okay, eleven point three.
Eleven point three. Okay, let's do this. We'll just put this on other business, and we'll let councillor Wigginsburg propose this item, okay?
Yes, I'm proposing it.
Eleven point one.
Councillor Wigginsburg is proposing that we add eleven point three. Someone want to second it?
Schaefer. Given that we haven't seen it, can we know what is in it before we propose and second and move it?
I will be happy to do that. Considering that council members received the list of community services and recreation... One second. Considering that council members reviewed the list of the community services and recreation director Irene La Haye submitted May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty... director Irene La Haye submitted May 25, 2020 on the hiring of white-collar student employees. It was proposed by councillor Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor Schaefer. That the town council approves the hiring of white-collar student employees as detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP local 429 and the town of Hampstead. And the hiring is subject to need on the part of the town. So then there is then a very large list of of people that the community services department has interviewed and recommended that we hire.
Part of, Mayor Steinberg, part of that list is, was originally for the day camp. We're not having a day camp, but you also have part of the list for the pool and stuff. So you do need to, you do need to approve this, but a large part of the list will not be used because it was for day camp.
Correct, and if people couldn't hear councillor Wigginsburg, what she's saying is that a large part of the list was for the day camp, which is not happening. But also on the list are a number of positions for the pool, which may happen and positions in tennis, which are, some may already be working. So that's what this list is. And now if nobody is opposed, we can.
It will be, Mr. Mayor, it will be item 14.1. Other businesses would be easier for the.
Okay.
For the, yeah.
Our town clerk is saying it should be item 14.1 since it's being dealt with under other business. All right, now, is anyone opposed? No. Okay, so that is adopted and again, this is if needed. Okay, now, any other business? We're finished with the regular agenda. Any other business that councillors want to add?
No, thank you.
And that brings us to. I don't think.
There is a second question asked by somebody, Mr. Mayor.
There is a second question? Okay, give me a second to find that question.
I can read it for you if you like.
No, it's okay, I think I'm ready yet. Okay, here it is. Also from anonymous, most popular person. Is the reimbursement for library fees being done now? Must it be done in person? I do not see any place on my Hampstead to complete this process. I don't believe we have any online way to do the reimbursement. I suppose you could scan the receipt to to the town. And if possible, we will find a way to get you the appropriate refund. And now I see there's a follow-up question to the bylaws question. Also from anonymous, but I suspect a different anonymous. And it says, follow up to the bylaws question, please further detail and explain what formal policies and procedures does Maitre Tap perform to ensure that current bylaws are provided to all town employees and how does he confirm that they are received and understood by the respective town employees? Furthermore, considering that and again, I have to, I have to find a way to get to the rest of this question. Unless somebody in the background can move my screen. I can't see the rest of the question, but I am going to ask my town clerk Pierre Tap to address this question.
I have the full question here, I can see, we're already finished reading.
Okay.
It says, I'm not sure where you cut off, but basically, please further detail and explain what formal policies procedure does Maitre Tap perform to ensure that current bylaws are provided to all town employees and how does he confirm that they are received and understood by the respective town employees? Furthermore, considering that there is a major, there was a major error several months ago relating to deployment of a new PAC member, which was not in conformity to existing bylaws and was under the responsibility of Maitre Tap, what safeguards are in place to verify that it is now working properly?
Okay. Maitre Tap will respond.
Yeah, but when we have the, now we try to have the best procedure possible to put the, all the information of the new bylaw on the website. And as soon a bylaw is adopted, I know that Karina is sending to all the department copy of the resolution and so on. So technically, the director of every department are the one who advised their man about the subject. Many, many times I talked sometime with Mike Fedrell, I may talk with Mario Duchesne about the fact that the new bylaw is an application. Do I receive okay from every members of the staff, blue collars and so on? No.
Okay, I believe the way this works is the audience heard that response, even if they couldn't see you saying it. So I believe that brings us to the end of the second question period. Would someone like to move a German?
Schaefer.
Mr. Mayor, you have.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax.
Oh, no, there's another question, Mr. Mayor.
Another question?
Yeah, question three, I see. From anonymous.
When you state that there is a request to change the facade of a building, does this include bricks, windows, doors? Please elaborate.
Okay, the.
Because we had a resolution where we changed the facade and it was deferred. So the question, the person wants to know, what does it mean to change the facade? In this particular case, it was deferred. But in general, when we change the facade, are we changing windows, bricks and doors or what?
I can answer if you'd like.
Yeah, councillor Budning will answer that.
Yeah. So essentially, when there's an, when we say that there's a request to change the facade of a building a facade, the change to a facade could be as simple as changing the windows from black, from white to black or from a certain design to another design of a window. Or a facade modification could be as complex as changing the bricks or actually making popouts or physically changing the structure. So there's many different variables that can be considered. The important thing to remember is that when a resident is requesting to change the facade of a building or to do a major addition or demolition, that's the sort of underlying criteria on a very, on a very broad perspective that would require them to go to the planning and advisory committee. When a file goes to the planning and advisory committee, that committee makes a recommendation to council and the council ultimately ratifies that decision, which is why we have all these different agenda items for specific urban planning files. So today we had, we had, we had a few files, we only had three files, but one of them was a facade modification where it was deferred because they were adding too many materials than was legally allowed. You're only allowed to have up to three different materials when you change the front of your house. So there's many different variables and nuances with regards to a facade modification. But like I said earlier, it could be as simple as changing windows and doors or as complex as changing the bricks or making an actual addition or changing the structure itself.
Yeah, the only thing I can add to that is I'm looking at the plans here. The current house, and I'm guessing I know who the anonymous resident was in this case. The current house has a semicircle canopy over the front door. It's, the current house is in white. So there will be quite a few changes, but the new one won't have that semicircle canopy over the front door. The bricks will be a darker, it won't be white, they'll be a brownish type of color. And so there'll be a number of changes, but this has come to our planning and architectural committee, I think about three times now. And we're still working to get, you know, the best possible facade. So I don't think anyone has to worry that it's gonna be something that won't fit in, that won't look nice. It should look very nice. It's always a matter of taste to some extent. But the architects and other professionals on our committee are very, very good. So I think that people will be happy with what they see eventually. And I know we're pretty close to final approval, so hopefully the next plan submitted to us next week, I hope will be the last time we'll have to deal with this particular house. Okay, now, unless somebody else. Now I can see all the questions, but I don't think there are any more, so if there are no more questions, I thank everyone for attending remotely. I thank all the councillors for being here remotely. And we're now going to adjourn and then the councillors know how to get back into our private caucus meeting. Okay, so someone want to move a German again?
Schaefer.
Goldwax.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor Goldwax. Anyone opposed? Nope, and we are finished. Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. Good night. Stay safe.
Good night, everybody.